Good evening, everyone. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, March 10th, 2021 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence, whatever you'd like to think about, pause, and take a moment and gather thoughts. Thank you. Everyone, please stand, and Alderman Ambrose will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Brian Krupp, our city clerk, please call the roll. Dunn?
Here.
Dorman?
Here.
McGinnis? Lee? Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Peacock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. So, good evening again, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the city council. Again, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's viewing our meeting on any computer or mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind you're sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and anybody in our viewing area. Happy that you're participating in our city government, and ask your participation, please reflect the common desire that we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for everyone. If you have a phone here in the chamber, if you please put it on silent, or turn it off just simply because it doesn't get in the way with someone talking. If you wish to address the council on any specific item, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. Please give your name, ward or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please be respectful. Ask that everyone observe, and I know you will. Commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste will be nice. You guys be nice, and we'll have a wonderful evening. Thank you. So, will an Alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for February 24th?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Spiegel, city administrator, is there any update for us?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Then we'll ask an Alderman to move approval of the report of a committee of the whole for March 3rd, 2021. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Good. We have some appointments this evening, everyone, to the Riverfront Improvement Commission. Two appointments. Bill Churchill is a reappointment in the 7th Ward, and Tom Guy is a reappointment for the 4th Ward. We have the Planning and Zoning Commission, one appointment. Paul Reinert is a reappointment. We have the Affirmative Action Advisory Committee. Tom Farley is a new appointment. Is there a motion to accept those? Motion and a second to appoint. Am all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Any of you in the audience here? I think I saw one. Did I not? Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Farley, let's give him applause for stepping up. And to all the people that are reappointed, or as Mr. Farley has new appointment, we're always looking for folks that like us, like to help serve on our commissions or boards. If you're interested, or you know people who might be interested, please contact your older person, and we'll try and get you into one of those things. We have many boards and commissions that assist the city council, assist the city staff on a lot of things that we do. So, we're always looking for folks to do that. Again, thank you, Mr. Farley, and everyone else. We have two proclamations this evening. One for Women in Construction Week, and one for World Kidney Day. The Women in Construction Week will be read by Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This proclamation, whereas National Association of Women in Construction, NAIC, Quad Cities Chapter, Chapter Number 50, has distinguished itself for 58 years as the voice of women in construction in a Quad City area, and whereas the work done by NAIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 has benefited Davenport through community development and educational programs, and whereas NAIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, and whereas the construction community, represented by NAIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50, has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trades, careers, and a positive vision of the future, and whereas NAIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 has sought to achieve successful results for Davenport, Iowa, and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. Now, therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby recognize NAIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf of support of women in construction, and do hereby proclaim March 7th through 13th, 2021, as 2021 Women in Construction Week in the city of Davenport, and encourage our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments, dated this 10th day of March, 2021. I move the proclamation. All in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
And we have Stephanie Hintermeister on behalf of NAIC here to accept the proclamation tonight. If you'd come forward, please.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes. Oh, yeah, sure. On behalf of Quad Cities Chapter 50, I would like to thank the city of Davenport, Mayor Mattson, and the city council members for this proclamation for our 2021 Women in Construction Week. NAIC's mission is to enhance the success of women in the construction industry. We provide awareness of the opportunities available for women, and we emphasize the growing role that women play in the construction industry. WIC Week is a time for local chapters to give back to their communities. Chapter 50 does so during the year through its scholarship program, and by partnering with local agencies such as Humility Homes and Services, Dress for Success, Winnie's Place, and Iowa Women Lead Change. This year, we handed out box lunches to Humility Homes and Services participants that are sheltered in hotels on Sunday, March 7th, and we are collecting donations for the Quad Cities Animal Welfare Center to be delivered Friday, March 12th. Thank you again very much for your support.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for all the work you do. So, the next one is World Kidney Day, and that'll be read by Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas, there are 37 million Americans with kidney disease, and whereas it is critical that attention be brought to this often overlooked but increasingly common disease. Major risk factors include diabetes, high blood pressure, family history of kidney failure, and being over the age of 60. Whereas, early detection and treatment of kidney disease could result in fewer Iowans requiring dialysis treatment or transplants. And whereas, the National Kidney Foundation represents Davenport patients, transplant recipients, and people affected by kidney disease and their family members. And whereas, the month of March is National Kidney Month, and March 11th, 2021, is World Kidney Day. And whereas, the National Kidney Foundation is the leading organization in the United States dedicated to the awareness, prevention, and treatment of kidney disease for hundreds of thousands of healthcare professionals, millions of patients and their families, and tens of millions of Americans at risk. Whereas, the Village Stroll takes place in the village of East Davenport each fall in order to raise awareness of the 37 million Americans living with kidney disease. Now, therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim March 11th, 2021, as World Kidney Day in the city of Davenport, and call upon all the citizens of Davenport to take care of their kidneys and get tested if they are at risk. The city of Davenport Sky Bridge will display the color orange Monday, March 8th through Sunday, March 14th, in recognition of World Kidney Day. I move this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mayor Mattson, I think the lady that was gonna take it won't be here, so we'll get it to her.
Yeah, we'll make sure she gets it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, so the next item is petitions and communications from councilmember mayor. I'm gonna execute a personal privilege here, and ask our good friend, Dan Gosza, who's the president of the school board, he'd like to make a few comments. So, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alderman. I just wanted to thank you guys for our joint meeting and working together. Out of 11 of you, I think 10 of you were there, so we are only missing one, so that's a pretty good thing when we can get together, and I appreciate our continued working together and collaborating, and as well as working with LULAC and NAACP. So, I just wanted to thank you guys for coming here. It's one of my free Wednesdays when I don't have other meetings going on. Our superintendent was gonna come down, but he's getting his second shot right at the moment, so he wasn't able to make it. But again, we greatly appreciate our, all of your efforts and support. And I do want to say, it is getting warmer out. Our kids are walking to school. The speed limits are not suggestions. That sign is three foot tall. I brought it up at our board meeting Monday night. People need to hear that, you're gonna hurt a lot of kids. I drop my kids off, and I drive down 53rd, and there's people going 40, 50 mile an hour right there by Harrison and North. It's ridiculous. I hope that we're able to work together on something, and start going with the police department, and start nailing some of these areas, and do some traffic, speed limit zones and stuff. But again, thank you all for your continued support of the Davenport schools. We greatly appreciate working with you all, and thank you for your service to the city.
Dan, thank you. On behalf of the city, I appreciate your partnership and the school board's partnership that, as the city and the school work together, can only benefit Davenport, and I appreciate the continued efforts that you do, and my colleagues here on the diocese, in our collaboration to work together to help our kids. So, thanks for your kind words. Appreciate it. All right, now I'm looking around. Any of my colleague council folks? I see Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to start off by also talking about speeding and loud noise, and particularly in our neighborhoods, in addition to our schools. I know that I've been working with a group of neighbors that are in the Harrison, Main Street, Brady corridor area, and we actually have formed a task force where one of the outcomes was passing or reworking, and thanks to the council, we passed our muffler ordinance a couple of agendas ago, cycles ago. And now that it's warm, we are re-seeing this problem of excessive speed, loud noise, and really kind of reckless driving. So, I have been in talks with our police department to see if we can find a way to get something more done in order to address it. But in the meantime, please just remember that they're neighborhoods, not drag strips, that we all live in there. No matter where you live, you wouldn't want that type of behavior happening down your street, so don't do it on other residential streets. And that's a PSA reminder that, I'll say now, that we're starting to get into the summer season, and I'm sure I'll probably say that every month from here on out, and so, don't forget that, please. But the next item I wanted to announce is just that I will be having my 5th Ward meeting this coming Tuesday, March 16th. It will be right here in council chambers. We've been going all throughout the COVID pandemic with a kind of a hybrid approach, where you can come here, or we'll also livestream it. Hopefully, we're not too far away from the days when we can all be together in one packed room, but until then, we'll keep on doing the hybrid approach. This time, we're having Laura Berkeley come to speak to us about all things zoning and the code, and maybe how it impacts you and your neighbors and your neighborhood. So, it should be an interesting, great discussion, and I hope to see you on there, or see you virtually online. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. Got the pleasure of serving as a council representative on the Parkston Recreation Master Planning Process that has begun here in 2021. So, tomorrow, Thursday, March 11th, at 7:00 PM, there is a virtual public information meeting on the parks master plan process. So, if you are interested in our Parks Department and the 56 different properties we have in our park system, then I invite you to join on that Zoom meeting. I believe the link's been pushed out through all of our appropriate social media, so if you go to the Davenport Facebook page, you should be able to find it. I'll share it on my Facebook page as well. Today's meeting, we went over the online survey that's going to be pushed out after this, this meeting takes place, and it is one of the better online surveys that I've seen. Lots of visuals, easy to use, tons of opportunity to provide public input on what you want our park system to look like. And master plans are great. They are a roadmap for what our city will look like in the coming decade. Cities are built in decades, so if you want input on what our park system will grow to be in the next 10 years, please take advantage of this opportunity to have your voice heard. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just very briefly, I had a chance this afternoon, or today, to have a little sneak peek at the downtown library. It's coming, they're renovations, they've been under renovation since, for a few months. They are, their new date for reopening has been pushed to March 22nd. That could change. They, along with anybody else that's doing any kind of construction, they've had some delays in some of their materials, and they had to push their opening forward a little bit, because it's harder to get materials in some cases. But I think you'll recognize the library. They've done a great job in making, opening up new public spaces, responding to, you know, what the needs are of libraries today. There's gonna be a great makerspace. There's gonna be some centralized areas for online services. There's gonna be a teen section, what they've never had before. The children's section is kind of where it was, but there's a chance, so that if a little, a little one cuts loose and tears across, it'll be a little, it'll be a little bit more confined. So, that's very helpful, I think, for everybody in the library, and probably for the dads or moms that are there with them. So, they're very excited about it, and so we'll certainly say welcome back downtown library. So, look forward to that coming later in March. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pausing. Okay, a couple things for me. First, I want to say thank you to Alderwoman McGinnis, Alderwoman Dickman, and Alderman Dunn. They got together, we formed a little working group, task force, committee, whatever you wanna call it, to discuss the heritage. You might have heard a little bit about it. We're selling that, and we're getting a little money out of it, so we asked those three to come up with a recommendation for council. Yesterday, we had the privilege of having those folks brief the council and myself and the staff on what recommendations they'd like to see with those, and I was pleased, very pleased to see the three entities that, or areas that they recommended money go to. Certainly, the first recommendation of a million dollars going to the Juvenile Assessment Center. We have been committed, there, I've been so happy with our staff, especially Ms. Dodd and our strategic planner, and our chief, Chief Skokorsky, who have been working monthly for a couple of years now with many partners from the county, and to keep this effort going. We have now committed, and always have committed, that we're gonna do this. The Juvenile Assessment Center is to keep people out of the Juvenile Detention Center. That's the point. So, we are moving with this. There's two parts of it, a community aspect, and then a law enforcement aspect. We are moving on the community aspect as we speak. So, again, thank you. And then the two other recommendations, because this was a housing thing, taking millions of dollars and putting in, actually, back into housing, that was a great recommendation. The council was very enthusiastic with their questions and what they want to do with that, so that's a, that's a moving target as, as we go. And then, again, as Davenport has already done, provided small business resiliency and hundreds of thousands of dollars to help our small business. They also wanted to add more money to help small businesses, especially in some of our challenged corridors. So, thank you very much for the three that helped with that, and the council's questions and, and efforts to support these recommendations, especially the one that we're getting after right now is the Juvenile Assessment Center. Then, to Alderman Dorman's point, if you remember, last year, we had the concern with motorcycles and racing, and some of you who've been around here a long time know the loop or the circle, or whatever you want to call it, the racing areas. We did a pretty serious effort to stop that, and some people might, might not know where their motorcycle is right now because of that. So, we're getting after this again. So, for you folks that are interested in trying to challenge Alderman Dorman's task force, or folks, or those areas, we're getting after it again. So, just be advised. And then, folks, we know we've had some challengers with some shots fired, just know the folks up here, the folks over there, the folks in the back, the folks across the street, we're not sitting on our hands. There's, there's constant communication and constant efforts, whether it's rearranging staff or doing other things to get after that. We are, we're working with our federal partners or state partners to adjust, to bring people in to assist. We are, so just know that, that this is, this is a focus of us. This is a focus that we're gonna get after this stuff. Have got after it, and find them, and we're, I just want to tell everybody, believe me, we're, we're doing this, so just know that. So, if you're out there, I've always said, and I will continue to say, you use a gun and commission of a crime here, there's one place for you, and we're gonna find you and get you. That's still a commitment, so thank you for that. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move on now to items on the discussion agenda. The first one is a third consideration for an ordinance for case REZ2008, being the request of MCC Iowa LLC on behalf of MM Development LLC to rezone 5,000 Grand Avenue from R-MF Multi-Family Residential District to I1 Light Industrial District to allow for construction of a communications building to house and operate electronics and fiber-optic cables. Is there any public with comment? Hearing and seeing none, will an Alderman move the consideration? There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion from Alder folks? Hearing and seeing none, Brian, please call the roll for third consideration. Gripp?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Ambrose? Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor? Very good. Brian, the ordinance is adopted. The second item is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 12.72 entitled Conduct in Parks to add a new section, 12.72.095, that prohibits the use of tobacco and nicotine products in the parks and park facilities. Is there any public with comment? Okay. Will an Alderman please move? There is a motion and a second. Any discussion from Alderman? Alderman Jobchin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned last week, I would like to make a motion to provide an exemption to this ordinance, but I just wanted to see if any of my fellow council members wanted to speak on this ordinance first before I, before I do so. So, I'll pause, and if not, then I'll go right into it.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you for that courtesy, Alderman Jobchin. Anybody else want to talk? I'm pausing. Very good. Alderman Jobchin, make your motion.
Wrong button. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So then, I would like to move to amend the proposed ordinance to exempt, on the course of play, of a golf course, not including a disc golf course, from the prohibition.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. All right. Now, we're on the amendment, so is there any discussion from my colleagues about the amendment? Okay, I see Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I'd like to have our Parks Director, Mr. Chad Dyson, come up, please. I have a couple of questions first. Thank you. Director Dyson, would you be able to provide us with some information about, first, kind of your opinion on this exemption, and how it may affect our parks, our golf courses during the course of play? You know, are there any local courses that have a similar exemption within their park system? And then, are you aware of any other known exemptions out there through other municipalities, whether near or far?
Sure. Chad Dyson, Parks and Recreation Director. As you're all aware, our golf courses are operated as enterprise funds, and in that regard, they rely on the revenue that they bring in to operate. They're not subsidized by tax dollars. So, one of the concerns we would have, if tobacco was prohibited on the courses, would be the potential loss of rounds or play from those users. The, as far as the local area, the courses we benchmark against, which would be the other municipal, we run courses in the Quad Cities, to my knowledge, none of them have a tobacco-free policy, so they continue to allow the use of tobacco on their courses. There, and that's including Scott County, which they have actually enacted a tobacco-free policy within their parks, similar to what we are considering here, but they have allowed for the exemption on the course of play at Glens Creek Golf Course. There are several, though, including Des Moines, who has a tobacco-free park policy, and they do not exempt their golf courses. I attempted to reach out to their director just to see what that impact looked like. They initiated that in 2019. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to have that conversation to this point, so I, I don't know if they had similar concerns to us as far as revenue loss, and if that was a reality when they initiated that policy. The other one I can, I can note is the Thinkbine Golf Course in Iowa City, which is university-run as part of the, their tobacco-free campus policy. They don't allow tobacco use on their course as well, so. But by and large, the majority of what myself and Kim Mills from Scott County have been able to find is the exemption to the course of play is pretty common when it comes to golf courses.
Thank you very much. I don't have any more questions. I just have a, just a brief statement, so hopefully I can do that, and then if anyone else has any other questions, I'll go from there. Last week, I was asked to, you know, provide, you know, what are, you know, what would be the difference on a golf course versus, you know, in our parks? And, you know, while hearing of some of these challenges of maybe enforcement and, you know, potential revenue from our Parks Director, you know, I'd like to take the opportunity to explain why I'm in favor of this exemption, you know, despite being favorable of an ordinance that prohibits use of tobacco in city parks. I do believe there's, there are differences from a public safety standpoint, actually. In the parks, outside of golf courses, people come and go freely. You know, as Director Dyson mentioned, golf courses are an enterprise where people play to, pay to come out and play. On the parks, you know, people can find, find themselves in close proximity of others without control of others, other people's spacing or movement. However, on the golf course, as mentioned, during the course of play, people are typically in groups of up to four people, which are usually hundreds of yards apart. Therefore, people have a significantly, excuse me, decreased potential for exposure to secondhand smoke on a golf course than they would within a park where they could be surrounded by others. The other safety issue where there is a difference, I believe, would be the visual influence of the use of tobacco on children's behavior. In the park, there will be many children playing on playground equipment, gathering with families in pavilions, or competing on the diamonds, and the influence of not seeing people freely utilizing tobacco products can possibly affect, you know, future behaviors. In my opinion, this is the desire of the overall ordinance. However, the demographics of those that are on a golf course are much older and different than those of the influential youth we are trying to protect. Now, children do utilize golf courses, but again, their exposure, I believe, is significantly decreased, therefore, making exemption something that's probable and reasonable. You know, as a result of the information that I presented, I hope this council votes favorably for an ordinance to prohibit the use of tobacco products in our parks with the exemption of golf courses, not including disc golf during the course of play. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, thank you, Alderman Jobchin. But I continue to really question, I understand it's an enterprise effort, it's not paid for by tax dollars, but it is our public parks. You know, are we gonna be leaders and set an example that perhaps other local golf courses will follow? Or are we going to allow, you know, one segment of our parks to somehow function? Or are we going to allow, you know, one segment of our parks to somehow function differently than the rest? I think it does set a poor example. Again, this is not a sport. I understand people pay for this, but it's not a sport sometimes that people can afford to play. I, you know, I see our public parks, and maybe this is a romantic view, but as a place where children can thrive, where, you know, they can have positive athletic experiences and our residents as well, but especially for our children. And as a former smoker, by the way, who smoked for 30 years and quit, you know, so my life has not been lived smoke-free at all, I just, I cannot support this. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Condon?
Mr. Dyson, if I can give you permission to shout from there, would it be hard to remove this exemption?
Please come to the podium so we put it on record. I appreciate Alderman Condon saving your walking feet tonight, but...
Would it be hard to?
If we just, if we exempted it?
Yep.
In two years from now, the pendulum has swung, and this becomes a much more common thing.
Yep.
Because smoking over time has, it's hard to imagine a bar where you could smoke, but it used to be very prevalent, and then we kind of stair-stepped our way down. I think you can still smoke in casinos. In two years, if we wanted to remove this exemption, because it seems silly that you can smoke on a golf course, would it be hard to do?
I wouldn't think so, but I think it would just be an ordinance change.
Thank you. And that's my surprising conclusion is ordinarily, on face value, I wouldn't support an exemption, but just as I tried to find some reasoning on this, it's something that we've progressed with over time, and I imagine very soon that's an exemption that we could remove, but it would give us an opportunity to bring some other communities along with us, and our golf courses are in a competitive situation for business. So I don't have any problem exempting the golf courses.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderwoman McGi, sorry, Alderwoman Dickman?
Thank you. Just a couple people have made the comment that the golf courses are not paid for with taxpayer money, but that's not 100% accurate. Operationally, they are supposed to be able to cover their own expenses, but capital dollars, we do invest in them, that's why they're a municipal asset and a quality-of-life asset, not an actual business, because if an actual business, it's likely that they would have shut down years ago when the, you know, the numbers were in the red more. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's probably going to happen if we, that people are going to end up smoking even if we don't have the exemption, or vice versa. But on a philosophy, I think I'm still going to support not having the exemption, because I think even the people who are in groups amongst their friends have the, should have the opportunity to have a smoke-free golfing experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Dyson, do you have an estimate of what the revenue loss would be or could be?
Yeah, so we have roughly 10,000 golfers in our database, and discussing with our contracted pros who oversee the clubhouse operations and have, you know, the pulse of the customer base, they estimate about 10% to 15% are probably tobacco users. So that equates to roughly 1,000 to 1,500 golfers. Assuming we do 60,000 rounds a year, that's an average of six rounds per golfer. That's a revenue loss on the high end of around 225,000, middle 150, and if you look at even a 5% decrease in play would result in about a $75,000 loss.
Thank you. Okay, Alderman Gripp?
I don't have any questions, Chad. Thanks.
Just keep your shoes on.
Not that everybody needs to hear my line of thinking on this, but I actually came to a surprising conclusion, the same as Alderman Condon did. So at first blush, I would be a, we need, we should ban smoking in public parks. I think any action you can take to reduce smoking is the right action to take. But when Alderman Jobchin brought up his proposed amendment to allow it on golf courses, and my immediate inclination was to offer an exemption, I thought, well, one of my least favorite things about the smoking in public ban in Iowa is that you can still smoke in casinos. In my opinion, you should either be able to smoke everywhere or nowhere. So I ended up in a strange place where I will vote yes for your amendment, but will probably vote no in supporting the ban in whole. So just my thoughts.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, I see then our corporate counsel, Mr. Hire, would like to make a comment.
I was just going to suggest, Your Honor, that Alderman Jobchin's, the language to make this more precise would be adding the phrase "except during the course of play" of golf on Emice, Duck Creek, and Red Hawk Golf Courses.
Okay, thank you for that suggestion. All right, so any other comments? Mr. Jobchin, would you like to comment again?
Go ahead. Say that.
You can put, we're cool, we'll put that in, so based on what Mr. Hire said, that's the wording for the amendment. Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, Brian, please call the roll on the amendment. Ambrose?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
No.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor? Very good. The amendment's added to this third consideration. Now we're back on the original with the amendment. Any other discussion from aldermen? Very good. Brian, please call the roll on the third consideration of the order, the amendment, I'm sorry, the ordinance with the amendment. Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
No.
Dorman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Peacock?
Yes.
Seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor? Very good. That passes with the amendment. The next item is a second consideration of an ordinance for case REZ2009 being the request of S.J. Russell, L.C., on behalf of the Sophie Foster Revocable Trust to rezone the property located at 4607 East 53rd Street to C2 Corridor Commercial District and R-MF Multi-Family Residential. The protest rate is over 20%, so it requires eight votes for passage. Is there any public with comment? Hearing and seeing none? Okay, there's a motion and a, oh, okay, I'll let you, come on when I ask. Yes, please state your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're at.
Sure. Michael Ryan, I'm from Ward 6, 4646 East 49th. My property abuts the southern border of this. I want to make one thing there, I very much do want to see this property get developed in an appropriate manner. I've been here, this is the third time I've gone through this, and owning the, my property less than 12 years, so I'd certainly like to have this finished and done with. But I think we have a little bit of, you know, a difference of opinion on what is necessarily appropriate. And so I do feel a need to reiterate my protest, because I know that the petitioners have kind of raised a couple of times that, well, we've made some changes, so we really should not worry about the protest, right? And I mean, they have made some changes, and I do appreciate that, but I think there are some other considerations that I do want to sustain my protest and don't want it just to be dismissed. In the last couple of weeks of, you know, trying to teach myself urban planning, I kind of keyed off of something that Alderman Gripp said, referring to this as kind of infill development, and it really is, because it is well-developed on all four sides, and it's really just this pocket of land that we're looking at developing. And one of the things that I kind of kept coming across was the idea that infill development should reflect but not necessarily imitate the surrounding development. And I completely agree with that. I don't expect to have, you know, cookie cutter, what we've got in our current area just mapped onto that. So I think if I take a look at what's going into my own backyard, or what is proposed to go into my backyard, which is duplexes, that reflects single-family development, and I can reluctantly get on board with it. I don't really like the 30-feet backyard that they're going to have, but it is reflective of what's going on. But as you go north of that, then you get into sixplexes, and then just above that, you get into this large apartment complex. And in the space of just two blocks north to south, you're quadrupling the density of this development, and I'm not really sure that that is reflective. And it's certainly not reflective when you take a look at it from east to west, where there's very little border on the west end to go from single-family to the apartment buildings, and there's even less on the east side, you know, even though they're in Bednorf, so we don't really care about them, but that goes directly from apartment buildings to single-family residential. And that is not, that start transition is not really reflective of the surrounding area. Additionally, the commercial proposal doesn't really seem to reflect the surrounding area either. If you look just north of 53rd, it's Office Park. But what they're seeming to be proposing, and I haven't really gotten a good idea of what they're proposing, because I don't, maybe they're still looking for tenants, and that's why they have to be kind of vague, but it does look like they're looking at, you know, putting a gas station in someone's backyard, and that is definitely not reflective of the development. It's a very intense usages that they seem to be proposing there, and I don't think that that is, like, again, reflective. If you start on 53rd and go east on 53rd from Utica Ridge, you know, it is a commercial corridor, I understand that, but if you travel eastward on 53rd from Utica Ridge, it's very low-intensity commercial that's going in there. It's office buildings. It's, you know, honestly, there's, once you get into Bednorf, there's a lot of residential. There's one little pocket of higher-density residential, which is that intersection of 53rd and 18th in Bednorf, but what they're proposing with this high density isn't really reflective. The other thing is, you know, if they are thinking about putting in a gas station there, that just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. We don't need another gas station there. We've got two a block and a half away. You can practically read the gas prices from the property that they're talking about. And then there's another gas station just, you know, a couple, you know, maybe half a mile west of this. So I don't really think that that's reflective either. So the other thing I do want to point out, I apologize for going long here, the proposal in the minutes that I read still had the north-south connection, and I don't know if that's me misreading it, or if that's just an oversight, or if that's planned to be addressed in the next reading. So I just kind of wanted to point that out. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public, please? Name, ward, address, or where you're from.
Kevin Dolan with the development team, and brought a set of the proposed conditions just for reference. But to start out as a point of clarification to the previous gentleman's comments, the northernmost part of the residential development that we're proposing does not contemplate apartments, but rather townhomes, high-end townhomes for rent. So just a minor technicality, but did want to correct the record on that. Furthermore, I wanted to thank members of the community, city staff, Laura, you and your team, the aldermen at large and ward aldermen for the continued collaboration as we finalize the conditions for this rezoning effort. You know, this was a process that started over two months ago with our first neighborhood meeting, and since that time, the development concept has continued to evolve. We've removed connections to the existing neighborhoods, we've added height restrictions and increased setbacks, among other changes. And with each iteration, we received more feedback from the community, and the process would repeat. Admittedly, when we started, the community, the neighbors, had serious concern. But through this process, it's been great to see the pendulum of public support swing favorably as we listened and as we fine-tuned the plan, as we added conditions, like you've seen in front of you, to make sure that not only is this development a great place to live and work, play, but that it also protects and enhances the community around it. To that end, we've made tremendous progress over the last few weeks, especially refining the concept and addressing any lingering concerns. So as a development team, we look forward to continuing this process and working together to create a fantastic development for the city of Davenport.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Pausing. Okay, Alderman Jobchin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief this evening. As the same with the first consideration, I urge all my fellow council members to vote yes tonight to move this on to the third consideration vote. I, again, will be voting no this evening. As Mr. Dolan pointed out, there are some proposed conditions with which they're agreeing on addressing some of these. Provide these to you this evening, so it can noodle on them, so then we can introduce these during the third consideration, and we'll bring that up next week, again, at the committee of the whole. So I thank, I thank all the residents within this neighborhood area continuing to provide feedback. Thanks for, developers continuing to work, to listen to the concerns that I bring forward, and work with me and deal with me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Dorman?
Thank you, Mayor. When I think about this case and what's actually happening here, and the development team developing a plot of land, a farm field, yes, surrounded by four corners, but still a blank canvas farm field in our already growing, thriving, commercial corridor, I think about the challenges that come with that, the opportunities that exist in there, and some of the compromises that need to happen in order to make that development work. And from what I've seen so far, you guys have done a great job of being partners with the neighbors to listen to them, to grow that, and hopefully to have a great development that is a win for everyone. And with that, though, it's in the sixth ward, it's one ward out of the entire city, the rest of us would absolutely love to have this type of development come into our ward. And I, that's where I challenge you guys to find ways where you can still bring your same great teamwork and community impact, but look at the Hilltop, Scott Tonclips right here, he's the director, if you haven't met him, you should talk to him after the meeting. But Rockingham Road, Washington Street, these other core neighborhoods where you can have commercial development and housing development all right in there already, and I know you have a business to run, and that margin might not be as high as it could be on this development and this property, but the lasting change that you could do to Davenport would be so extremely large if you could take the same great teamwork and apply it to some of our other older parts of town. So in general, I'm happy from what I've seen so far in the listening you've done and the changing and being willing to adapt in order to hopefully win for everyone. So I'm in favor of this, and I hope that this is just one of many developments you guys are able to do as a team with us as community partners. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Anyone else? Pausing. Very good. Brian, please call the roll on second consideration.
I apologize, Your Honor. I heard Ambrose move second consideration, but I didn't hear a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
I apologize, too. Thanks for making sure we're tracking.
Okay, roll. Ambrose?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobchin?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Eight yeses and one no, Your Honor? Very good. Okay, that moves to third consideration. The next one is a second consideration for an ordinance for case ORD 2002 being the request... zero two, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to amend a section of the camper, campus master plan bounded by East Eleventh Street and East Tenth Street between Pershing Avenue and Perry Street from an athletic field to student housing. Is there any public with comment? People are moving, so I'm making sure they're not coming this way.
Moving, considering.
All right? There's an all, mo, mo, there is a motion and a second. Any discussion from Alderman? Hearing and seeing none, Brian, please call the roll for second consideration.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
And Gripp?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. That moves on to third. The next item is a second consideration ordinance for case ROW two zero dash zero two, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic for the vacation of the public right-of-way known as East Eleventh Street between Perry Street and Pershing Avenue and a portion of an alley in block eighty-nine of Leclerc's Eighth Edition. Is there any public with comment?
Second.
Okay. Alderman, motion and a second. Is there any discussion from Alderman? Pausing. Very good. Hearing none. Brian, please call the roll for second consideration.
Peacock?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
And Ambrose? Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. Moves to third. Next item is a first consideration of an ordinance for case ROW two zero zero dash zero two, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to vacate a portion of an alley in block ninety-six of Leclerc's Eighth Edition. Is there any public with comment? Hearing and seeing none. There's a motion and a?
Second.
Second. Any discussion from Alderman? Brian, please call the roll for first consideration.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ambrose? Condon?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. Moves to second consideration. The next item is a motion approving the following beer and liquor license application. New license, new owner temporary permit, outdoor area, Ward seven, Jesse Smart, thirty-seven twenty-one North Division Street, license type E liquor. Is there any public with comment? Assume these people aren't coming up here. No. Very good. There's a motion and a? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Any discussion from Alderman? Alderman Doorman.
Thank you, Mayor. So Jesse and his son are businessmen within the fifth ward currently, uh own the, the Save More and the gas station right across the street on Iowa and Locust Street. And um when, they, they recently purchased the property, the gas station at Iowa and Locust Street, which was a uh gas station that had criminal activity with it, that had bars on the windows, was not a um good business for our neighborhood. Well, I, I asked Jesse when, when he bought it, if he could be a good neighbor and be a good community partner and clean up the property, clean up the area. And that he did it. If you guys drive by there on the way home tonight, you will see there are no more bars on the gas station. Um, they have a great uh relationship with the police department in order, uh, when criminal activity happens, um, they call the police and get the police involved and, and get the bad customers uh away from the business, and they are good community um partners. I, I know that we have a lot of concerns with alcohol and liquor license and um we like to vote no in order to um kind of cover our basis since the state doesn't give us many other options. However, I do think that uh Jesse is a good business owner, he's a community asset, um he's someone that could help the community, does give back, and so that's why I, I would like you to um think about this um from that light and that perspective and, and his already demonstration of uh being willing to work with us and, and work with um the neighborhood to, to have a, a nice uh business that i- is good for us, good for him. Uh, so that's just one, I would hope you would consider when you're voting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well spoken, Alderman. You know, all I ever ask is for someone to be a good neighbor, and if they're good neighbors, I do whatever I can to support them. They got a great history, you've heard it from our city attorney and the police department, so I'll support it. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Alderman Doorman, I do appreciate your words and vouching for a, a business owner uh in your ward. And uh Alderwoman Lee, who's not here, uh her and I had a discussion yesterday that, that she met uh with the business owners as well, and, and she had very nice things to say uh about them and their intentions. Um, for me, this is a pure, purely philosophical, uh this is about protecting working-class neighborhoods and poor neighborhoods from, from liquor stores, and in my opinion, uh the city of Davenport needs to continue to tell the state of Iowa that we need local control over where liquor stores can go, and if we don't continually voice our concerns to the state, they will never hear them. So, for that reason, I'll, I will be voting no on this.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just uh, Alderman Gripp has said it well, um, this is a um, a, an odd case, a business that was there that was zoned very deeply commercial, that probably would not have been zoned that way had that business not been there and it closed down. Um, so I, I don't believe, if you look at a map of where this is, we wouldn't even be talking about this, um, if this property had been sitting there and had been zoned under the new zoning code. I worry that it is isolated, it is not that far away from, from two schools, um, and uh I, I agree, we, because we cannot control uh what happens with these licenses very well, we, we do have to continue to push back, so I will also be voting no. It's too close to a neighborhood, it's too close to schools.
Thank you. Alderman Jobchin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Doorman, uh, I, I echo those sentiments, um, and, and very nice words. Um, my protection, you know, the protectionist in me, um, which causes me to drag my heels with the rezoning um case, you know, also makes me believe that, yes, philosophically, this just doesn't fit. Um, I can't be supportive of it either. Um, I'm glad they're very reputable owners. I hope they continue to do so with the businesses they run, um, when they probably eventually get their liquor license and start operating here again. I hopefully they, they uh, they continue to do so, but I can't be supportive of this this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pausing. Very good. Brian, if you please call the roll on this license.
Gripp?
No.
Condon?
No.
Peacock?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
No.
Ambrose?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
No.
Looks like two yeses and seven no's, Your Honor.
That's correct. This does not pass. It fails. Okay? Um, okay, next item is approval for all items on the consent agenda. Motion and a second. Brian, please call the roll for consent.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ambrose? Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yeah.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. That passes. Next item is there other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for this evening. Is there any public with business? If there are, please step to the podium one at a time, give your name, or request, you give your name, address, or ward. If you're not from here, we'd love to hear where you're from. Please, and you have five minutes.
My name is Joseph Charlton. I agree with Mike and uh Doorman about the motorcycle and stuff. They keep saying, open the window. We gotta do something. They, they, the cops, I mean, if they come up there and sit on the Locust and Harrison, they're the shale station, that's where they hang out, then they drag race down Harrison Street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello, thank you for listening to me. Uh, my name's Jeremy Flynn. I reside at nineteen thirty-four West Fifty-four Street here in Davenport, and I'd like to propose the addition of street legal golf courts in residential areas. Uh, Davenport, I spoke with my alderman, Mr. Gripp, about this, and he advised me to bring this before the council for your consideration. I own a golf cart and have been doing everything I can to legalize it with headlights, turn signals horn, and the cart is fully insured. I've done all these in order to make it street legal areas impending your votes. I know DeWitt and Eldridge have approved city ordinance that allow this, following the safety guidelines requirement that they set forth. This would be nice in residential areas just to keep an eye on what is going on in our neighborhoods, while not driving our vehicles around to check on things all the time. Thank you for your time, be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? And just so everybody knows, we don't dialogue here at Publica Business, we take your information and then folks will decide what to do with it later.
Good evening, Bill Handel, uh fifteen fourteen West High in Davenport, also Nashville, Tennessee, and I want to talk about two things, um, that I guess I've talked about in the past, this is about our riverfront, um, and as the weather gets, gets nicer, more people want to spend more time on our riverfront, and uh I think there are two things that can be done fairly inexpensively that would do, go a long way toward making our riverfront more uh appealing to our visitors and to our guests. And uh, the first regards to the um, the Ferris wheel that currently is owned by the uh, the ballpark owner. Last year, the city did a great job of, of putting together uh railroad crossings, and I think they got as much as could reasonably be, be expected from the railroad. But I think uh there are a couple items that uh, that probably still need to be addressed. Um, I think um at uh the Freight House, we probably have, should be considering some type of pedestrian crossing there, because um otherwise it's about a over, overblock each way to get uh, each way to get to uh the, the Ferris wheel. I think uh we have over two hundred thousand people a season, I, I believe, that attend our farmer's market. If uh the Ferris wheel were active then, and if we had a pedestrian crossing, I think uh it'd be a big amenity for both uh the, the farmer's market folks as well as anybody uh coming to our riverfront. And uh what I'm proposing, obviously, it's not owned by the city, but perhaps, you know, public-private partnership, perhaps the city could take over some partial ownership of the Ferris wheel, um, so that it could be open more than just during the ballgames. Again, during the weekend when the farmer's market's going, perhaps all weekend wouldn't be a bad thing, in the evenings, especially at night, uh, it'd be very refreshing to be on a, a Ferris wheel uh right next to our river, and uh I think that's something that uh, that uh we could, could get some uh, some revenue from as well. Uh, again, it's having an amenity that's already there, but uh making it so, so it's much more usable, uh gets more use. I think having it just a couple of uh evenings a week for uh ballpark visitors isn't quite enough. And the other one is uh similar to that is the old Riverview Inn at the, at Main Street. Uh, it's one of those little buildings that was put up by, designed by Fritz Clausen, our best architect of our city, who did the Peterson Pavilion and others. Uh, it's been sitting there derelict for the, that last twenty-five years at least, but it uh, in the, the minds of many of our residents, it's pretty much well-regarded. And I think the city ought to look at getting that thing renovated, getting it open. Not supposed to introduce, talk about any of the council members, but council and Dunn, you know, on Forest Street, uh, the Sweet Delight, if there could be something similar to Sweet Delight in that building, we'd have people coming from all over the, the city and, and uh, and uh frequenting that building. So I, I think, at the same time, I think we could have some seating right down there. Uh, we've got a nice public bathroom, perhaps the operator of that could be in charge of making sure that, that, that space is safe and, and clean. Um, I also think probably, at the same time, although we've got a very nice truck dock, I mean, a, a food truck facility, perhaps a couple of the food trucks could be uh stationed at the, at the foot of Main Street Landing there as well. So, and uh perhaps the city would like to uh work with the, the high schools. Uh, I'm sure there, there are musicians, performers in our, in our high school bands that in the summer evenings, they'd be happy to, to uh set up there. Perhaps the city could give them a few bucks, and then um they could ask, act as buskers and, and get donations from uh people that enjoy their music. So I think both those things have some real valid uh amenities, and I sure would like to see the city think about that. Thanks for your time. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is John Dutey. I live at forty-seven twenty-five uh Kinnellworth Drive in Bettendorf. Thank you for talking about shots fired and, and gun violence earlier in the meeting. There, um, when I came back to Davenport in two thousand sixteen-seventeen, um, I did a lot of work in Washington DC with young people and gangs and, and worked on their city council on reducing gang violence in DC. So I um first got in touch with some young people that I had heard about were in gangs. Two, two young men told me, one, it's as easy to get a gun as it is to get a, buy a bag of potato chips in Davenport. Second guy told me that, John, when we leave here, you'll go one way, and I'll go one way, the, the other way, they're two different worlds. I never thought I'd see the level of gun violence that I saw in DC here in my hometown. And that was really striking, um, when I met Sister Bee, she'll talk later, she's a sister humility, she also saw it, and started a bearing witness group back in two thousand four where, where their sisters would go into the neighborhoods where there was actual shooting. This summer, on July thirtieth, a couple of children were setting up a lemonade stand on Thirteenth and Gaines, and two-thirty in the afternoon, and, and two cars, passengers in two cars, started shooting at each other. The kids had to run inside. Um, there was a group of pastors, a group of laypeople, said there, this is, we were reading about this, um, the chief um confirmed this January that there was a forty-eight percent increase, and shots fired seventy-five percent and not fatal. We were seeing that last summer. We could not allow ourselves to um accept gun violence as normal or inevitable. And, and so we started holding vigils every, within twenty-four to seventy-two hours of, of a shots fired incident. We've held fifty-seven vigils um since July thirtieth in every single ward, in North Park Mall, at a funeral home, at Chuck E. Cheese. Today, we held one at Seventh and Perry for four incidents that occurred since Saturday. You're right, Mayor, we've got to arrest people um that, that are responsible for shots fired. But, but in every single neighborhood, just like those mufflers and just like that, that smoke, there's that sound of gunshots that never, ever, ever goes away, that there's that individual trauma, and there's that collective trauma that gets recycled throughout everybody's lives, and including your lives, and especially the police, who are responding all the time. We need something more than just a law enforcement response. And the stats that I sent to you this morning or this afternoon shows that eighty-five percent of the kids in our detention center this year, last year, were kids of color. The state of Iowa has four percent um, um African-American population. The victims of gun violence in the state of Iowa is over thirty percent. I'm sure that, that percentage is much higher in Davenport. We've got to stop this cycle of violence um that is caused by the trauma that is being caused by the violence. The juvenile assessments, that memo that Mayor, Alderman McGinnis and Alderman Dunn and uh Dickman wrote was amazing, and I think it gets to the heart of a lot of our thing, our issues. But there's one thing that's missing, and this council has shown um from the very beginning that you love data, and you love research, and you love evidence-based. But there's, but when it comes to equity, and when it comes to racial equity, you don't have that same appreciation, it doesn't seem like, that when, there are people here talking about- here talking about African Americans in Davenport are, oh, twenty-nine percent of Davenport African Americans own their homes. Sixty-seven percent of white Davenport residents own their homes. When you talk about in nineteen fifty-six, Charles Tony probably stood in this room and challenged the city leaders at that time to hire more African Americans. Sixty-five years later, we're at five percent. Think of every single budget that has been passed in those sixty-five years. How much of that money has gone to the white community to, as opposed to the black community? Same for the county, same for the school board. There are stats after stats after stats that says that there's a racial equity gap in Davenport. We have to look at that as the foundation of a lot of the other issues that are, we're facing, or we're not going to win. We're not going to win. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Paul, okay.
Council, Mayor, Dave Kenny, second ward. Haven't been here in a long time, and I apologize for that. I've been a bad citizen, but I'm back on the, hopefully getting involved. I don't like to come here, but, uh, I have an issue with, uh, some city staff. Uh, I'm involved with the Quad City Food Forest. I don't represent them. I'm just a volunteer. But, uh, and some of the new council persons may not be aware, we have a, we used to have the largest food forest in the United States here at the west end of Davenport. If you go down River Drive, get to Concord, take a right and go over the river there, Blackhawk Creek, little creek there, and take a right. That's part of the garden addition that was turned into a park years ago. Like, we've been planting trees, bushes. We have a vegetable garden there. Complete support of the neighborhood. The issue we're having now is that because of COVID this last year, our volunteers did not feel safe to come down there. Uh, one of our blocks weeds kind of took over for part of it. And last year was not that good either. Our volunteers have gone down. We're, we also lost some members of our, uh, we have a nonprofit. We lost some members that moved away or, uh, didn't volunteer anymore. So I'm involved with the vegetable portion of it, the vegetable garden we have there. And the, the food forest has free food for the community. Uh, you just come there and take what you want. And it's all volunteer. And, uh, we want to continue that, but there's one block that is a problem. And the city wants to come in and spend three thousand dollars of taxpayer money to dig up the trees, these mature trees that have been planted since two thousand sixteen, that provide a, a lot of fruit. They've got plum trees, pear trees, apple trees. We have bushes in there and other plants. Um, the reasoning is, is that we didn't take care of it and we let things go. Well, I mean, if you get a pimple on your forehead, you're not going to cut your head off, are you? We need to work with the city on this and, uh, with Alderman Dunn and the rest of, uh, the city staff to solve the problem of making sure the weeds are taken care of. And then we also have an issue with one of the neighbors on that alley. It's a short alley that never wanted it there. He's been against it from day one. But I ran into him, uh, in the fall and he was complaining because he didn't get more peaches than he wanted. So he does utilize the food forest, which is kind of funny. We have good support, but we don't want, the, the city kind of, uh, I heard anyway, they forced the person that's in, kind of in charge of it now to mark some trees to be relocated to a block adjacent of that, which does not have room for eighteen full-size trees, uh, semi-dwarf trees. So, uh, I would like the, the city staff to just cool it for now, back off. And we're, we're getting our insurance. We're getting the lease signed. We're getting more volunteers and we hope to have this under control. So for now, I'd like them just to, just to stop the idea of moving these trees. Many of them will probably die if you move them too. Um, so that's, uh, basically why I'm here is that I'm concerned that this, this will go through. And the one resident doesn't support it, this is a public park. It's for everybody in Quad Cities. There's one person who wants to back his truck or car or whatever and use this public grassy area and, and make ruts in it. Uh, is he going to dictate what that block is used for? I, I don't think one person should dictate that. Um, so that's just, uh, basically what I'm here for in that. And also I see that the, I hope the city will continue to work with us on this and that they don't go ahead and do anything rash in the meantime. And also I'm glad to see that you allocated a hundred fifty-four thousand to Hawkeye Paving to take care of some of the potholes because I just had to replace the struts in my car. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no one. Is there a motion? Are you coming? Is someone coming? Well, Jane, we're at, I'm pausing here. I've been asking, so we're onto that.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't find for somebody else to, to speak. Um, I'm Jane. I do X. I live at twenty-one eleven East Lombard Street. And I, uh, was out in the hallway and missed, uh, the presentation by, uh, Rick Dunn and, and Maria Dickman. So I, I missed that, but I might have a little bit of the gist of it. Anyway, I'm fully supportive of the Juvenile Assessment Center. Um, I was rereading some, uh, past, uh, editorials, um, including one from you, uh, Mayor, um, how to deal, um, that's the same one, where you talked about, you know, asking for the community support for the juvenile, or, yeah, the Juvenile Assessment Center. Um, I listened to, uh, Police Chief Skodarski two or three years ago when he gave a, a PowerPoint presentation to us about it. Um, but I agree with, with John Dutey. Um, and, and also you talk about it, Mayor, in your editorial, the tools to control crime, that, that piece, um, where we need a comprehensive, well-rounded approach, um, that would be the most effective to reducing, um, you know, crime in our community and investing in neighborhood health. And we talked, we heard from Palmer recently, you know, and they've mowed down a lot of, of homes in the area that we still have a lot of crime. We were there at Seventh and Perry today. We need to really think hard before we, you know, build more student housing there instead of reinvesting more in, in, in our citizens that are living here. Um, and on February fourteenth, we, uh, a group that I'm involved with, the Juvenile Justice Coalition, um, and the, uh, an Equity Coalition, wrote a letter to the editor. I don't know how many, uh, of you, but actually it was a guest editorial, how to deal with inequities. Um, you know, I'd like to share a copy of this with you rather than reading it all now if you haven't seen it. So maybe I'll, you know, email you the link to that. Um, but please take a real hard look at each of these points. Um, you know what John had to say about, you know, black homeownership and, and, and Latino homeownership and the lack of employees, you know, I mean, what, what year was that? Nineteen fifty-six? That somebody stood here and, and talked about that and we still are really in sad shape about that? That's how we're going to change things. You know, you talk about, uh, Mayor, um, in your article, um, about how domestic violence has gone up and child abuse has gone up, you know, well gunfire, you know, and comes out of that, you know, the frustration that people feel instead of dealing with it because we don't have great mental health services here. And, you know, I feel like we really need to break this cycle of drug use and alcohol use a little bit though, you know, I mean, I'm a social drinker, so, you know, I don't have any, you know, I don't want to be prohibition, you know. But we need to really look at that. We don't, we have, we're sorely lacking, sorely lacking in really, really decent services in this town. And I love that you're going to take a million bucks and put it into the Juvenile Assessment Center, but we need another million bucks put into programs and services. You know, after you assess these kids, then what? You know, then what? And I, you know, you, many of you know my story. You know, I adopted a couple of kids out of foster care. Mom smoked crack cocaine every single day she was pregnant with my son. You know, my son just turned twenty-one and two weeks ago to, uh, tomorrow, the birth of his daughter happened. You know, it's a, it's a gift from God for me to have this little girl in my life. And in his life, as he sits over in Fort Dodge, you know, having first been arrested, you know, here as a fifteen-year-old. And we didn't have a juvenile assessment center then, and we didn't have, you know, charge of an adult. They sat twiddling their thumbs with nothing, nothing in the Scott County Jail. And a judge tells me, there's a hundred programs for people in the Scott County Jail. Not if you're younger than eighteen. And the juvenile detention center isn't much better. You know, we had a kid from North Scott that took a gun to school in North Scott, sat in our juvenile detention center for well over a year. And they recycled the education program, no, no high school credit happening, you know, or junior high credit you don't really need, but high school cred, none. You know, very minimal counseling. You know, it, we need something better, you know, than what we have for programs and services. My kid, his first gang member he met was in eighth grade when he went across the street to the CAD school, after-school program actually for, you know, drugs and alcohol. That's when he met his first black savage member, you know. And then it's connected to the Savage Life Group, you know. And it's the adults, some cases the parents of these kids, that are having these kids be the mules, you know. And my kid, you know, he ended up owing the drug dealer over a thousand dollars. And that's why he did his first, you know, robbery, to try to pay the drug dealer back because the drug dealer is threatening him with a gun. So anyway, please, the programs and services, it's not just the building and it's not just assessing these kids. We have to have money into mental health and, and changing, you know, what's going on in the household, you know, rent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor? Very good. Everybody be safe. Have a good spring break.